Hello, everyone. First off, before we get started with public delegations, I'd like to say a little something. Oh, first off, we have two members that are not here, Ms. Markovitz, as well as Mr. Pivo. So we are going to be seating the two alternates, Mr. Peterson and Ms. Suska. Thank you very much. Good evening and welcome to the 2024 edition of the East Lime Zoning Commission. It's wonderful to have everyone in attendance tonight. I will note that Mr. Pivo and Mrs. Markovitz are absent as regular members. My welcome is extended to all members and alternates. Before we get started, since it's a new year, I would like to ask that we ensure, as a commission, that we all are cognizant of our responsibilities to the public and to each other. I would ask that we all be reminded that while we're serving on this board, we note that we represent the community. I want to ensure that we conduct ourselves in a manner that is respectful to our applicants, their professionals, members of the public, and of each other. Obviously, we will disagree from time to time with one another's views. Some of the subjects before us will be emotional and may raise passions and controversy. However, it is important to remember we all are entitled to our opinions, and we need to be respectful of each other's positions while we debate the many important issues that come before us. I'm looking forward to working with all of you and encourage all of you to follow the decorum of the offices that we hold on this commission as volunteers. With that being said, it's time to move the meeting forward. Once again, thank you all for being here. And if anybody needs anything, just ask away. So, thank you very much. So now, we're going to move on to public delegations. Public delegations is a time set aside for the public to address the commission on subject matters not on the agenda. Who would like to speak?
I would, sorry. No, I'm speaking.
And when you come up to the podium, would you please give your name and address, please?
Absolutely.
Hi, Nick Menapace, 38 Hope Street. All right. I stand before you today not to address any specific agenda item, but to once again command the residents of East Lime. The previous commission's chairperson chose to play political games, especially when it came to the nominating and seating of people on this commission. In the November election, voters sent a clear message rejecting all the members of this mission who censored those they did not wish to listen to and ignored the voters' desires. That is a testament to the strength of our democracy. Our town thrives when residents actively engage in the democratic process, making their voices heard through the power of participation and of their vote. The election results indicate a collective desire for leaders with a different vision for our town than those members who were voted out. I do not want to see this commission start its term by telling the voters of this town that they do not care what the voters want. East Lime deserves elected officials who respect and prioritize their voices. Some members of this board may feel that they are not accountable to the voters of East Lime. Due to our town's minority representation law, which guarantees a minimum number of seats for the losing party, situations arise where a person is chosen by the voters, such as with Dr. Greg McIntyre, who received the most votes for alternate in the commission November but are not seated. It's an unfortunate situation for our county, but one that this commission obviously has only limited capacity to deal with. I also wish to remind the commission of the procedure for Robert's rules when it comes to nominations. The person, chairperson or otherwise, seeking nomination cannot just move to a vote when they hear the first one. Nominations are opened, and to close them, nominations need to be called for three times. I think you all know how to do that. The commission then can move to a vote. I also want to thank you, Ms. Jett Harris, for what you're saying for this one. I think it's very good. First Amendment rights are absolutely important for this. It is really, really important that we remember that we are trying to do what's best for that town. We also want to remember what the voters ask for, and we think that's, well, that's the whole reason why all of you were up there. Well, most of you were up there, I should say. All right. Thank you. Have a great day.
Thank you, Mr. Menapace. Is there anybody else that would like to come speak? Okay. So we'll move on to the regular meeting. At this meeting, we are going to, I need a, we're going to take a motion to vote for the election for the alternate vacancy. We have missed the deadline of the 30 days, but we can, if we have a motion and a second, and we can do it, we can make a vote to make a recommendation to the Board of Selectmen. It is out of our hands. We did not receive the resignation letter of the previous alternate in a timely manner. So this is what we have to do. So we have to entrust the Board of Selectmen. So that's what we're going to do. But we're going to do it with a recommendation, which we are allowed to do that. According to the, let me just get my, it's a charter.
State statute.
No, it's, hold on a second. Let me, I want to be very, very accurate because I wrote it down, and it'll just take me a second. I'd like to be accurate in my information.
It's the town charter.
It is a charter, yes. Okay. I thought so. But I just wanted to make sure it wasn't in our bylaws. So according to the town charter, we're allowed to do this. So what we're going to do is, is that, do I have, at this time, a motion to vote on one of the alternates to send to the Board of Selectmen as a recommendation only? They will have the final say, not us, unfortunately. But we have full confidence in the Board of Selectmen and their decision of whoever they decide to pick. So at this time, do we have a motion?
Madam, should I ask a question? I believe you had five applications.
We did get five applications. And I'm, I see.
And I think all the members of the commission have, by email, received those applications.
Yes. All of you have received them, correct? Yes, we had verified that before, so. Okay. Sarah, did you get the applicant?
No, I did not. At that time, I was not aware that she was sworn in yet because I was not told again that we had another sworn-in or resigned member. I just found out today that she was signed in, or sworn in.
Did she get sworn in, Sarah?
Is there another alternate?
Well, we know we're doing it for an alternate. We can still do it without a quorum. I can unseat her and then reseat her because she doesn't have the information.
You are the chairman.
Yes. So Sarah, would you mind terribly to step down so we have a quorum and we can do it, and then we'll reseat you? So at this time, I'm, yeah, you can just, yeah, yeah, you're coming back. Yeah, you're coming back. Yes. And another reason why, too, by doing this is because everyone showed up. So since people take the time to show up and to volunteer, we want to let their voices be heard. So at this time, do I have a motion from any commissioner, one of the commissioners? And we'll need a second to be able to move it. So to vote for a recommendation from the five candidates that we received, and I'm going to ask some to speak and stuff, but I need a motion to, for the alternate position, the vacancy, which will get sent to the Board of Selectmen, and they will make the final decision. But this way, we send it with zoning and tell them this is what we did.
Are you looking for a name or just a motion to make this recommendation?
We're just looking for a motion to make the recommendation.
So moved.
Second?
I'll second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries, 5-0. Okay. So at this time, what we're going to do is, we're going to ask the candidates, there's five of them, who would like to come first? Tell a little bit about yourself, so, for the record?
I will. John Vilcek, 4 Meadow Street.
I'm sorry, sir. Would you mind terribly to stand over there?
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay, thank you.
I can do that. I'll go first.
John Vilcek, 4 Meadow Street, Niantic. I submitted an application because I've been a resident for 48 years. Town's been good to me. We've maintained a good relationship. I'm now retired, have available time, have an interest in maintaining the town integrity, and put forth my name and application as a member, potential member, alternate, to support some stability in the town. As Nick Menapace has mentioned, we need to do. Simple, that's it.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Vilcek. Do you have any ques, do we, does anybody have any questions they'd like to ask?
No.
Just wondering what you've been doing for the last 48 years.
Well, I spent 29 years in the Navy. Went from E1 to 04. I sold real estate for two years in the late 80s. I was the disaster recovery, emergency preparedness, one of a group of 12 people for AT&amp;T for our worldwide network operations to restore communications in the case of outages. I've been a repair officer on a submarine tender. I ran a Navy facility in Annapolis, Maryland. We had bachelor and family housing quarters. I maintained a public works through a public works officer. So I think I've had a broad concept of understanding of how communities work. So I thought I'd put forth and give it a try.
We appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else have any questions? Okay. Thank you, Mr. Vilcek. Okay. Anybody else that would like to speak now out of the five candidates that put their names forward? Mr. McIntyre?
Can't seem to prepare, but why not?
Hi, my name's Greg McIntyre. I live at 41 Shore Road in Oak Grove Beach. I've been a permanent resident here in East Lime since 2012, when we bought our first property in Oak Grove Beach. We subsequently moved to a different property in Oak Grove Beach, to 41. We were at 3 Barrett Drive before that. As you know, I did run for the four-year alternate position and received the majority of the votes. And as Mr. Menapace correctly pointed out, because of the minority government rule, I was not allowed to be seated. So when another alternate position came open, it seemed only natural for me to apply for it. I do have an interest in East Lime. I have a serious interest in making sure that our growth and our development is handled correctly and in a conservative way. Even though I am a Democrat, it's hard for me to say conservative. But I think this town deserves that kind of attention and deserves that kind of thought going forward. Any questions? I haven't been doing anything for 48 years. I did some things for 30 years.
Would you like to talk about them?
I actually have a master's degree in oceanography, and I currently sit on the Inland Waterways Agency. That seems to be a reasonable fit. After three or four years of working and researching oceanography in Georgia, I then went back to graduate school in Delaware, got a PhD, chemistry, actually worked for the now-defunct Eastman Kodak Company. My wife has a theory that every company I ever worked for went under. Not my fault, of course, but, but as part of Kodak, I became part of their pharmaceutical company when they bought Sterling Drug in 19, I want to say, 88? Yeah, 88. I worked in pharmaceutical companies, big and small, startup, large companies. Ended up working in Bausch &amp; Loeb doing pharmaceuticals for the eye, doing injections. You know, and you say, "I'd rather have needles in my eye." We put needles in your eye. Then did, switched careers and did urine drug testing for pain management drugs, OxyContin, things like that. And then retired from Carolina in 2018 and became a peer permanently.
Okay. Anything else? Anybody have any questions?
Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. McIntyre. Okay. Anybody else? Please step up to the podium and state your name and address, please.
Hi, I'm Ann Thurlow. I live at 80 Smith Street. I would absolutely love to continue serving on the zoning committee. I do have a passion for it. I've had six years of experience as an alternate regular member, as secretary, as chairman. I have completed two training sessions with Connecticut attorneys on zoning law. I have also served on the planning commission and have completed planning workshops before. I did narrowly lose the last election. However, it was by a few votes, and I do have a lot of support in town. East Lime has been a part of my life since, I guess, I was born. I don't have any hidden agendas. I just like to do what's right for the town. Thank you.
Anybody have any questions? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Thurlow. Anybody else? Step forward, please. State your name and address. Thank you.
Daniel Glenn, 103 Flanders Road. I've been a resident since 1958. I can remember when this town used to be mostly woods. My grandfather and my father built about two dozen houses in this town, including 13 houses in Black Point. I grew up, I attended the old Lily Bayne School, which was torn down for the new middle school. I then went through the school system. I attended Rhode Island School of Design, where I received a Bachelor of Fine Arts and a Bachelor of Architecture. I went on to work for various architectural firms, including Centerbrook Architects, which in 1998 was voted by the AIA to be the number-one architectural firm in the country. I worked there from 1987 to 2006. In 2009, I started my own business, working out of my house. I designed a number of residences and all Souls Unitarian Edition. I did plans for Cafe Soul II, after the old Cafe Soul was planned to be torn down. Anyway, I have a definite interest in the development of the town, that it's done in a disciplined way, following the regulations, and hopefully, we can control the development and also make East Lime a very beautiful and caring place to live. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Pen. Well, there's no one else. There was a fifth person, but they're not here tonight. It was, it was a nurse. Do we know what her name was?
Kathy Uhas was the fifth name. I, I, I mean, I know Kathy. She and I were actually in our same class in, in school. She's lived here forever. I don't know what her specific interest was in zoning, but.
She was, she's a nurse, and she made a very night. She loves the town, and, and she just wanted to serve her community.
Yeah, very nice person.
Yeah. Okay. All right. So she's not here tonight, so I don't know if she's, maybe she's changed her mind or something, so. I'm sorry.
I have no idea.
I have a question.
Yep.
Is, of the candidates, also going to be given, giving a presentation in front of the Board of Selectmen?
I would imagine if they, if they really want the position, that it would be a good idea to show up at the Board of Selectmen meeting because they would be making the final decision. We're just doing.
Yes, we will, we will make it a point to invite the candidates and, of course, include whoever you recommend. But certainly, the others are welcome to attend under the public, under the public portion of the meeting.
Okay. And I will also make sure that you get all five of the candidates' information that we have.
Thank you.
You're very welcome. Mr. Mahal, would you please take care of that?
I will.
Thank you. Okay. So this is the part where we're going to vote for, since we already have a motion on the floor, and it's through. It's merely a recommendation to the Board of Selection, Board of Selectmen. They, it does not give them the position, and we're allowed to do this. So this is, this is what we're going to do. So at this time, we're going to take a vote. We'll start at the end. Mr. Peterson, out of the five candidates, what is your vote?
I nominate Ann Thurlow. Yes.
Okay. Mr. Foley?
Ann Thurlow.
Mr. Peck?
I'm going to pass. In a way, I'm a little bit, I don't mind the Board of Selectmen making this decision. It's, there's a, a few good qualified people here.
Okay. And Nancy?
I agree with Norm that, that there are some extremely qualified people here, but I honestly have to say that I would vote for Ann Thurlow.
Okay. There are a lot of qualified people here. I am also going to vote for Ann Thurlow. So we will send our recommendation to the Board of Selectmen. They will have the final say, and I'm sure that they will pick the best candidate. And we have full faith in them. And thank you all very, very much for your interest and for coming and taking the time. And I will make sure that your information that you sent to us will get to the Board of Selectmen, and they will review it, and they will notice, you know, that you'll find out when the meeting is. You just won't have to guess. We'll make sure that you're notified. The Board of Selectmen will make sure, right, Roseanne?
Yes, the Board of Selectmen will not meet next Wednesday. It'll meet the following Wednesday.
Okay. So they have time. Okay.
And I bet that we will put this on as an agenda item as opposed to just generally comments from the public.
Okay. And thank you very much for the information. Okay. All right. So.
In the interest of presenting a recommendation to Board of Selectmen and having it the unanimous decision by the zoning board, if you don't mind, I will put my name in as supporting Ann as well, so that you can present this as unanimous.
Okay, Mr. Peck. Thank you. Please let the record state that Mr. Peck has changed his opinion. Thank you. Okay. So moving forward, we will have an approval of the minutes from November 2, 2023. Sarah, would you like to be seated? Thank you very much. It's 12:00. You have a minute, Nancy. Not one for you, but I will. It's 12:00.
There we go.
We'll see.
We have three meetings to approve in the minutes, correct?
We have 12, we have 11:02 and 12:07. We have two, right, Jess?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
We have just two?
We were presented with October 19 as well in the package.
I think on the December 7 meeting, the 11:02 minutes weren't provided to us. That's why we wouldn't, they weren't approved.
Okay. So are we going to just read the two of the, the ones that we have? But which ones are we missing, Jess? Do you know?
11:02?
11:02.
No, we have, I have 11:02 in my hands right here. So we have 11:02, and we have 12:07.
All right, let's start there. I'll move to accept the, I'll move to accept the minutes of November 2 as presented.
2.
Sarah, have you read the minutes? Yeah, okay, good. Thank you. Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay. The motion is carried for 11:02, 2023 zoning minutes entered into the meeting. So next, we have 12:07, 2023.
Same motion.
Okay. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay. So that motion carries as well. So. So now we do, oh, I kind of went out of order. I went out of order on the reading of the minutes. Sorry, guys, I had to do roll call. Debbie Jett Harris here, Norm Peck.
Yep.
Denise Markovitz, she's absent. Michael Foley.
Yes.
Nancy Claw.
Yes.
Gary Pivo, he's absent. Alternates that are seated this meeting, Mark Peterson.
Yes.
And Sarah Suska.
Yes.
Okay. Now we'll go to ex officio. Oh, I'm sorry. It says on the agenda next is ex officio. Roseanne Hardy.
I'll wait till I can present the budget.
You have budget on next, on your agenda. You should.
I, I don't, though. Why is mine different?
That's sort of a generic agenda you're looking at rather than specifically tonight. Yeah, take this one.
Yeah, mine, mine doesn't look like this.
So next on your agenda is budget.
Okay. That's why I'm going, because mine is different. Okay. All right. So zoning budget, Mr. Mahal.
So very briefly, essentially, a housekeeping issue. This is the same budget we've had for quite a while. I think you all have a copy of it in your budgets, so, in your folders. Excuse me, I'll start at the top. Salaries, that's, that's decided by the Board of Selectmen, Board of Finance. Longevity, that's also decided by the town. The next item is part-time clerical work. Clerical salaries, that's for the clerk to appear here and to be paid. Going down to professional conventions, that number is consistently what we've had. We talked about increasing it, but we've tried to stay near a zero budget as directed by Finance. You'll see in consultants, there was, it's been zero for some years. Some years ago, we had $4,000 to $6,000. It was taken out by the first selectmen, several first selectmen. I've put $2,000 back in as a, as a point. It's up to you what you choose as a number to ask for. You can leave it, you can eliminate it, you could add to it. Transportation allowance, that's for me coming and going to different things using my own vehicle, representing the town. Supplies, we boosted that number for printing. We doubled that because in today's world, that expense is higher, and I'm required to have the zoning regs available in print, so I have to have some hard copies. Miscellaneous supplies, we were at 1,200, we went to 1,500. Books, pencils, paper, copying for your meetings, et cetera, et cetera. So you'll see that number is our, is our budget. Probably one of the leaner budgets in the town hall. I would suspect in the, in the future years, that will change. We're so, we're so busy that, and there's so much activity that we're probably going to need, look to ask for a part-time person to be helpful in the zoning office. I know Planning's looking for somebody, too. Building's got three people. So as the town grows and becomes busy in order to cover all the bases, the future, we're going to need a little additional help. I will note that in the secretarial positions, Jess is full-time. The other position was part-time. It's just gone to full-time. So that's allowed us to do some extra things that we haven't been able to do, such as getting to the zoning regulations, making sure they're updated. All the municipal office work that typically, with the demands, sometimes falls behind. So we're now being able to get up to speed. And we have two very crackerjack people in our admin position, so we're very, very fortunate. I'm just hoping nobody tries to steal them from us. So that concludes my view. Questions?
Well, the town doesn't break out legal services board to board?
They have in the past, and then they've, under different administrations, they've pooled it all in one place. And we previously used to get the bills in our office, and we'd mark down when we talked to legal and when they did things for us, and they tracked it that way. We have a new finance director who seems to be pretty crackerjack, and I think his view is, and I think the administration's view is to put it all in one pot and, and look at it that way. So we don't get involved in that daily, and we don't even see it now on a monthly basis where one time we did. And certainly, from my office, we seldom contact legal unless we really need them. I'm experienced where I do a lot of my own reading, et cetera. And today, we've been relatively successful. But there are those issues that come up that we need the legal expertise. Those are the people who represent us and defend us.
If somebody brings, if somebody challenges a whole ruling brought, made by the zoning commission and ends up in court, that's just, that's not built to zoning, that's built to town of East Lime.
It's, it's built to the town of East Lime. I believe they're on a retainer for so much, and then beyond that, there's probably a system in place for additional charges. If the board is litigated as with any board, then the town automatically defends. And so, and if, in your example, they would defend us in Superior Court. Somebody challenges my decision, it goes to Zoning Board of Appeals. I may ask the attorney to represent me at that meeting, because we want to be able to find, hopefully for my position, which is gonna be based on the zoning regs, generally black and white. And then if that's litigated, it goes on to court. And again, we may need a separate law firm to defend, because one firm may be representing me, so occasionally we'll use different law firms.
Okay, anybody else have any other questions for Mr. Mahalan about the budget? Can I have a motion to approve and forward the budget to the Board of Finance?
So moved.
Second?
I'll second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Mahalan.
You're welcome, thank you.
Old business, there is none. New business, we have an application of the Town of East Lime, Department of Public Works for coastal area management, site plan review for replacement of a shoreline flood and erosion control structure, which is a seawall, at McCooks Beach, property located at 8 Atlantic Street, CB, Niantic, assessor's map 11.4, lot 175.0.
Excuse me, Madam Chairman, normally I wouldn't say anything because it's new business. We have made some temporary repairs, emergency repairs, so we don't lose the parking lot, we don't lose more. I've been very, very involved in, and of course, on Atlantic Street, all the seawalls been damaged on all those homes between McCooks and between Crescent Beach. DEP's heavily involved. I've been down there with them several times. And there is one property that's also making emergency repairs, but has a certificate of permission from DEEP to do so. At the seawall, it's a soil and erosion control structure, so there's automatic referrals to DEEP, and we'll probably be doing cam reports on them for the repair. I know we have a storm coming in. Some homeowners have not done anything, so hopefully nothing will happen. So we will see more of that in the future. So thank you. I just wanted to share that we, the town has made some temporary repairs.
I just have a question for you, Mr. Mahalan. When something like this happens to that portion, part of the seawall, which seems, you know, when we have big storms, it's always problematic, who, who actually pays for this? Do, is it insured?
My understanding is that on the private property, those seawalls on Atlantic Street belong to those private property owners. So that question is whether their insurance policy covers that. I'm not knowledgeable about whether they do or don't. I'm not, I don't think they do.
What about the McCooks section?
McCooks, I don't know. I haven't asked the question to Finance yet. We haven't gotten there. At this point, our Public Works went down and made some, some repairs. I've got a plan for temporary protection, because if you don't, you're gonna lose more in the next storms. And we all know we're seeing more and more volatile storms, and some of, most, many of them are unnamed.
By May, we had some seawalls replaced at the Oak Grove Beach last year, and they were totally at the expense of the owners. Their insurance properties didn't, didn't recover.
Yeah, that's, that's how.
And that's my understanding as well. So thank you.
I will provide further information during my report.
Okay. All right, so next up, we have an application for the East Lime Zoning Commission for a text amendment to the East Lime zoning regulations to amend Section 24, site plan review requirements by adding subsections 24.6 G dash 1, and it's the outdoor lighting. So this application was tabled initially, the second part of it. It was two parts. It was a pollinator pathway. We approved the first part of the text amendment. And the second part, there was a lot of moving parts in it. There was like 10 things we really wanna give it our all. So what I'm going to do is, is I'm going to ask two commissioners, and I'm going to form a subcommittee, and I'm also gonna ask that staff be involved in that subcommittee as well. And I would like to ask Chairman Norm Peck to be there, be, be part of that subcommittee, and Mrs. Kalal to be part of that subcommittee, too, along with staff.
So, Madam Chair, so you're tabling item number two and forming a subcommittee, just to be clear?
Yes, that's what, yes.
Thank you.
That's what we're gonna do. We're gonna table it, and I think that it deserves a lot of attention. And I think with a subcommittee, and then they can get together and they'll report back to us, because like I said, there was a lot of pieces there. We wanna make sure that we look at it all very closely, as it's a very important issue with lighting.
Everybody okay with it?
Yeah, is everybody okay with that? Yeah? Okay, so we need to make a motion. I do it. So all in favor to make a subcommittee consisting of Commissioner Peck and Commissioner Kalal, along with staff, to form a subcommittee to look at the second part of the pollinator pathway, the second part for the lighting, for the site, for Section 24, by adding subsections 24.6 G dash, is that, is that a one or an L? An I, okay, all right. It looks, I wasn't sure. Outdoor, so what it consists of is the, is the outdoor lighting portion of that subsection. So all in favor? Can I have a motion first, please?
I think you can just do that, but if you'd like a motion.
I think we should, I think we should.
Excuse me, as Chair, I believe the bylaws allow you, as Chairwoman, you have that discretion just to appoint subcommittees.
Okay, so I, okay, so I appoint.
Discretion.
Okay, all right. Well, that's what I thought, but I wanna make sure that everything's done correctly, that I do it all correctly. So I appoint Norm and Nancy, and thank you, Norm and Nancy, and staff, to work on this and get back to us, and let us know what you have found out. Looking forward to it.
Before we vote, I have a comment.
Okay.
I am, personally, am not knowledgeable at all about this lighting, and even the terminology is over my head. Could we have the lady who presented this to us attend?
This wasn't in her portion of that, that amendment. This is coming out of my office. I've done a lot of reading. I have, I have mounds of material.
Yeah, but it, it was second in her portion. She did, she did have it in there.
Well, it was actually a text amendment to that section of the zoning regulations where we put her request into it.
Oh, okay.
So more of a site plan housekeeping, and then we added some things to it.
Okay.
And as you recalled correctly, that the first portion of the proposal passed, and this section was not included. So the thought was to bring it back and see what you chose to do with it or not.
Okay.
So you can fill us in.
I can get you up to speed. I could direct you to read till your eyes are pink. There's a lot of material on the subject. The issue is, how involved does the community wanna be? We're not a metropolitan area. Some of the material out there is more aimed at that sort of thing. We're more of a semi-rural area. This is kind of urban, suburban. Some of the regs that I have read, I don't think are appropriate for our community. But with that said, it's common in the industry nationally, internationally now. What I have found is, while we think we've done fine with the lighting, after buildings are built, we might go by a month later and there's wall packs on the building that can be very bright, and we, they weren't included in any of the application process, and it's, hey, what's this? And so we wanted to make sure that we spelled out that any lighting is gonna be on your plan. And some of our applicants are from out of town, hiring out of town folks, and, you know, they're here for their purpose. So in order to help protect the town, the thought process was this, well, we don't wanna overlay all the requirements and, and be overly restrictive. We wanna be appropriate, so it came up in discussion amongst staff, so we put it forward. And this brings us to this point, so as a committee, you can look at it and decide what you think and make your recommendations.
Does that answer your question?
Yep.
Do you feel comfortable with it?
Yes.
Okay. Nancy, do you feel comfortable with it?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. So I feel better voting on it, just so we have it out there, so we voted on it, even though I can do it, but I think that we should vote on it, so. All in favor of forming a subcommittee, which would consist of Norm Peck and Nancy Kalal, to look at section, subsections 24 dot 6 G dash I, outdoor lighting?
Yes.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, motion carries, six, zero. Thank you, guys, very much. Okay, any business on the floor, if any, by the majority vote of the commission? Is there anything that anybody wants to vote on with the majority of the commission? Mark?
No.
Sarah? No? Okay. All right, the next on it, on my agenda is.
Zoning guy.
Yes, zoning official.
Zoning guy, I don't really have anything. We're busy, we're studying. Holidays are over, we had a little bit of a lull. We're still in a little bit of a lull, in my opinion, based on the high interest rates. Although the high-end stuff, we're still seeing quite a bit of activity. We had an application come in the other day, for example, I think the home was $3 million, the building permit fee was $50,000. So we're having some high-end activity. We're seeing some commercial activity, but it has eased up. It may be temporary, but that's where we're at now, so I have nothing further. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, comments from ex officio, Mrs. Hardy?
Thank you. Well, everybody's busy this time of year, and the Board of Selectmen is no exception. So probably uppermost on everybody's mind is the damage to the seawall, which was spoken about previously. So at last night's town meeting, well, we called for a special meeting, but at last night's town meeting, it was approved. We had some ARPA funds set aside for emergencies such as this. So we took $25,000 from that fund, transferred it over to a new account, which we set up to take care of the McCooks Beach seawall. Unfortunately, the $25,000 is temporary. It's a stopgap. The, and the town meeting, of course, approved that. So kudos to the Public Works Department, because they were under a great deal of pressure, many worked overtime, to get this done unbelievably before this next storm rolls in. So this is the older part of the seawall, which was, to put it bluntly, cheaply constructed and done in a hurry. And with the cons, I, I think, as I thought at the time, that we did not have appropriate advice from professional engineers, or engineers that wanted more money than we were willing to pay. And lots of times, particularly when it deals with the environment, we're foolish to take the cheaper route. But that was some time ago, and it did hold up for some time. The newer one that has, was, was added, the newer portion, that held. So as I said, amazingly, in a short span, we didn't think we would be able to get it done before this next storm hit. And had this not been able to be done, it would have called, caused really far more damage. Already, the parking lot was, had been flooded, was in danger of next storm hitting that. That would have just been disastrous. And of course, we lost a lot of, not only the parking lot, but a lot of the beach. So again, kudos to that department, and as I said, many worked overtime. Giant, over a ton of these giant cement blocks were brought in on very short notice, hauled in, and the whole project, as I said, really deserves a special recognition. So the short-term rental subcommittee, ad hoc committee, met with a town hall attorney, had a lengthy discussion, and it's moving forward. Their next meeting is for January 16th. I don't know if anybody from the board would have an interest in having someone attend that meeting. And there's a public hearing that is planned for January 29th.
What time, Roseanne?
I would imagine it's seven. That's what time their other meetings have been. But that should be noticed when this, when, when notification comes out of this. But I'll make certain that board members are noted. The Police Commission said that last, this year's light parade had the highest attendance ever. And yet, our local police force, with the addition of our two officers, additional officers, which we finally got, were able to deal with the situation, and we did not have to call in other towns to assist. But some of them just showed up. It was a great parade, one not to be missed, apparently. I'm sure they did not come on overtime. Also, the new exit 74 northbound ramp, if you haven't noticed, and travel the route is open. And this is just the first project, as we know, that will continue on and on and on. And again, kudos that our police department is the only now fully accredited police department in the state of Connecticut. Let's have a thumbs up on that.
Yay.
Our townwide meter replacement program for our water and sewer is 96% complete, and that will alleviate a lot of problems that have occurred with failing meters and other issues. This project has taken over two years to complete. And I, oh, another item of interest is that at the prison, they're implementing an aerospace machine shop, and they will begin producing parts for the industry, which is pretty amazing. And prisoners who take the program, are trained, will be paid the prevailing wage, and receive recommendations for employment. And their wages will be paid upon their release from prison, successful completion of their sentence. So I think that's pretty exciting, and certainly a positive thing for people who have successfully completed their court sentencing. And then the development at Darrow's Pond, Parks and Rec made a very lengthy presentation on that and their plans. And those plans, as well as pictures, are available online. This is some time ago, the Board of Selectmen turned control of that property over to Parks and Rec, and so they gave us an updated report on what they are expecting, what they are hoping to develop in phases. And at one point, there was, they were proceeding with, to do a pickleball court. But again, in the interest of good community relations, the prison gave us a piece of property, and we were able to use that property for them to do the pickleball courts, again preserving some of our open space. I know this is a little more talkative than usual, but it's the new year. Be prepared.
Thank you, Roseanne.
A couple of questions. I was a little surprised that this board wasn't involved with the short-term rental. It's a, it's a subject that, what we do.
I think they're going to be at some point, we're going to be at some point, right?
Right. So this is really basically a lot of public input, but I certainly would encourage somebody from this board to attend the meetings. I think I've seen.
I did.
Yes.
If, if I may, I think our last chairperson was on the committee, if not still.
Yes, I believe that, that person still is on the committee.
So is this supposed to come before us? Has, has zone regulation changed?
I would assume, but I'm not positive.
Doesn't it depend, Roseanne, on whether the Board of Selectmen chooses to make any, any.
Correct.
Short-term rental, either an ordinance or.
Right.
Or kick it out.
This is an advisory, an advisory committee. They can only make recommendations.
Right, but they're going to recommend either that the Board of Selectmen take it up as an ordinance, or as zoning, take it up as a regulation, and at that point, it'll go either to them or come to us. Is that right?
In general.
Yeah, so, but I, I think that the board should follow this quite closely, so that you're well informed. you're well informed. I have not attended every meeting, but there's been a tremendous amount of public interest and quite a bit of disagreement, different priorities.
Has there been any discussion about prevention in regards to the erosion of Crescent and McCook's Point?
Yes, but it's, I don't know if we're going to have money in this year's budget for a consultant to come in and do some, some evaluation. That might, that might be forthcoming. I don't know if you have any additional information, Bill?
I don't at this time. You may recall that Crescent Beach spent quite a bit of money to rebuild their cliff walk at one point after a storm some years ago. Gaco was the engineering firm at that particular time. Very difficult build, but they put it together and did quite a good job and it's held very well. Deep was involved during the permitting, this board was involved during the permitting. We had some, some meetings on that. So anything going forward, I'm sure we, at some point, whether it's just that staff or the commission may be involved, depending on what their findings are and what they want to do, DEP would most likely also be involved.
This is a different animal than the bluff.
Yes, I understand.
We've got a tremendous loss of sand. When I was a kid, I remember the frontage in front of these houses was tremendously The sand moves from west to east around the bay and shoots out. I thought, I mentioned this to Mark Nicholson, that there's a groin right at Crescent Beach.
Yes.
And you'll notice all the sand that has been captured on Crescent Beach. The difference between the west side and the east side is obvious. It's probably 15 feet of sand depth on the west side. I thought a couple of groins, McCook's Point itself is a natural sand catcher groin. The breakwater next to the bridge is another one. That will eventually capture so much sand, it's going to take a turn right up the river, the sand. That is, I think, what the consultant is probably going to discuss and then he's probably going to say, DEP doesn't like groynes, but there's a tremendous case. I mean, these people are going to lose their houses and more sand will help. So anyways, it's food for thought.
Okay, well, perhaps Bill and I can have a discussion about this, as to how I might present this to the Board of Selectmen, if that's agreeable with the commission, or meet with somebody from the commission. Unfortunately, I'm not a boater. I don't own a boat, but I've fallen off several.
[laughing].
But, and capsized. So, that's really not an area that I'm knowledgeable on, but I'd be happy to be an advocate for it because I do agree it's very important and I hadn't thought about it.
Would a jetty slow it down, or?
Well, that's what I'm talking about. A jetty groin is kind of like a jetty.
As Norm has pointed out, Deep is not fond of, of new groynes and et cetera, et cetera. I have a lot of contacts there, I can certainly have a chat. That is a little initial research.
Well, I'd be happy to meet with Bill and follow up with this and so that I can bring some of this back to the Board of Selectmen. But of course, it's always, it's the Board of Finance that has the moneybags.
I think the Crescent Beach Association, combined with the town, the funding would be.
Okay.
They have a lot to lose.
All right, thank you. Okay, I am completed.
Thank you, Rosina. You're very detailed.
But now, now I'm open for questions, if I can remember what I talked about.
Something about falling off a boat?
No, we're not going to ask those questions. We don't want to know.
No.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Happy New Year.
Happy New Year. Okay, the next thing that we're going to do is comments from zoning board liaison to planning and it would be January 9th and it's going to be Mr. Foley. And January 13th is, Jess, do you know who January 13th is?
February 13th.
February, I'm sorry, February 13th.
If you want to go alphabetically, then we can just change the order that they have or you can just slide Sarah into where January was.
I think you have the schedule in front of you.
I, I, I don't.
So it was alphabetical, so we could put Miss Ginsburg next, but since he's not a commissioner anymore, that spot is open, so we can either shift the whole thing alphabetically or we can just slide Sarah in where Jay was.
Sarah, would that be okay with you? Are you open to attend on February 13th? We all take turns doing it, the, for the Liaison to Planning Commission, you just go there and listen to their meeting and then report back to us, the commission.
Especially if it, but I don't want to commit until I have them in hand.
No, I can appreciate that.
All right, I'm in.
Thank you very much. So, Sarah Suska will be in for February 13th.
Okay.
Okay, so, before we go on to the correspondence section, I want to, I want to ask Bill and perhaps maybe just Bill a question. There's been two corres, two things that we haven't gotten in a timely manner and number one is that we didn't know that Sarah wasn't sworn in until late, late, only because I called like right before they had closed. Because I, we hadn't heard about it, so. And, and Jess, I want to be clear about this, you didn't know that she was sworn in either, correct?
Not until I asked specifically.
Yeah, and that was like late, it was tonight, wasn't it? Like, we had, we didn't receive anything, so. And there was also too, the Jake Ginsburg resignation letter, we didn't get that either.
Right, that, the, your, your bylaws on a resignation require certain things. Not every person who resigns follows through on that, so unless we are noticed, that staff or you are noticed, we don't know. Typically, the clerk will, the town clerk will, might put that into our mailbox in our meeting room, but the public has access to that space, so that we're not getting anything directly. It actually calls for in your bylaws for the, I think it's the Secretary of the Commission to be noticed in the first selectman's office as well as the clerk. But if somebody who resigns, just resigns from the clerk and there's no follow-up and we certainly don't chase that at our level, we have enough on our plate and you folks are laypeople. The town clerk's been pretty, pretty good about doing that, but again, we didn't have a lot of information and so there seems to be that we need to develop a process to ensure that that, that we are informed.
Is it?
When somebody is sworn in, et cetera, et cetera. And if you're new on the commission, you don't know that, the system, because you're brand new if you've not been exposed to it. So, and the clerk has no, I don't think there's a requirement for them to do so, I think it's more of a courtesy, but I will certainly.
Right, yeah, no, no, it's, it's not.
That be done to just ensure continuity.
Right, it's, it's, I, I would like to ask that in the future, when some, when someone does resign, that maybe it's like walked down or that, or somebody walks up and gets it, like as soon as they, because what happened was, is it got probably left up in the mailboxes, but we didn't get it.
It never came downstairs, so.
Yeah.
With that said, because I understand, my understanding is it was placed there.
Right.
But it never came in the mail. I think Jess and our other admin go up and get the mail and it never arrived and they certainly would have brought it to my attention and we would have sent it on to you all.
Exactly, I just, I just wanted to know how the process was and also too, Sarah also being a sworn in member on December 18th should have had that information for the candidates, which we'll make sure she gets now.
Typically, what we try to do in the office when we know there's an election activity is to look for people who are going to be new and try to contact them, but we don't have the contact information often. And so we are going to the clerk, do you have any of this information? Who are these people? And so there seems to be a little gap in there where we're trying to chase people because what we want to do is have them down to the office, spend an hour with me, introduce them, get them some zoning books, get them bylaws, get them set up so that you can sit with some reasonable intelligence and be somewhat comfortable at a first meeting if you've never attended. And then we have an opportunity to discuss protocol, et cetera. I know Mrs. Kalal and I spent some time talking. Sarah and I have yet to have the opportunity, but we talked tonight and she's going to be coming in as soon as she has some time.
Okay, I was going to say Jess.
And we're, and we're going to sit down and get her organized and up to speed.
Yep.
And reading material if necessary, those types of things.
Thank you very much, it's a very good idea.
So we try to do that with everybody. Everybody has a different level of interest and time.
Yep.
On their hands. Some people are retired, they have a little more time, other people's are in the midstream of their lives with family, friends and kids and so on.
Kids and stuff, sure.
So, we're there to be helpful where we can be.
Yes, and I appreciate that, thank you. And I thank you, Sarah, for taking the time because I know you have young kids and stuff and so it's, so it can be, it's difficult sometimes juggling the schedule. Next on the agenda, we have correspondence. We received emails from Commissioner Pivo and those will be entered into the minutes and, and they were correspondence in regards to the vacancy position. So those will be entered into the minutes. Next is comments from the chairman. I would like to thank Jess and Janet and Mr. Mahalan, but probably Jess and Janet more because they did this, Bill didn't do this.
Yeah.
Thank you very much for this updated version.
Thank you for that.
And adding the four text amendments that were, that needed to go in there. Thank you very much. So everybody now has an updated copy with all the proper information and everything's all updated and it was a lot of work. I mean, this, these are like double pages and stuff like that and you guys are extremely very efficient downstairs and we certainly appreciate it. My thing is, is I just want to make sure that when people resign or, you know, if there's something that is important that we get it, you know, we gotta, we gotta figure out a way that we get the information, so that way everybody has it all. That's the only thing that I request. So I appreciate everybody taking the time to come tonight and I appreciate the public coming tonight, I appreciate the candidates that have put their name forward and so now it's, it's, the vacancy will be in the Board of Selectmen's hands and it'll be that. So, thank you, everybody. So it is now, do I have a motion to adjourn the meeting? So move.
Second.
Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, motion passes. Motion, meeting's done.